Good evening, Thousand Oaks. This is going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for March 15th, 2021. For viewers watching at home, all commissioners and the public are participating via video conference or telephone conference to assist the city with our social distancing efforts, which please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're not used to doing that a cappella, by the way. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus?
Present.
Commissioner Link?
Present.
Commissioner McMahon?
Present.
Commissioner Newman?
Present.
Chair Lanson?
And I am here. Item four, written comments, announcements, supplemental packets, and continuances. Tonight, we have with us interim deputy community development director Carrie Finley. And Ms. Finley, do we have any written comments, announcements, or continuances?
There were no written comments or supplemental packets submitted, and there are no additional announcements or continuances concerning tonight's agenda items. Thank you.
Going on to item five, Ms. Gore, do we have any public speakers, public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay, we will then go to item six, which is new business, which is the Planning Commission reorganization. First, I want to start off with the certificate of recognition for outgoing Commissioner Kevin Kohan. I'm going to read a, on behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks process, Mr. Cohen, in terms of what you've done for the city. On behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks, we want to thank you for your two years of service to our community on the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. You have generously volunteered your time to serve as the City, as the Planning Commission for the city, and have proven to be a valuable resource in the city's decision-making process. Can I have the clerk display the certificate, as well as a special City of Thousand Oaks paperweight, given an appreciation for your service?
Yes, here's the certificate. I'm not sure if you can see. Okay, and there it is. And we also have a special paperweight that's engraved with the City of Thousand Oaks.
And it looks heavy.
It's pretty heavy.
Also, Mr. Cohen, I would like to add that former Commissioner Cohen attended eighteen Planning Commission meetings and participated in twenty-six public hearings. During that time, he had a hand in helping make decisions on issues involving the city's transportation center improvements, Cano Recreation and Park District improvement for the Cano Creek Southwest, municipal code amendments for biotechnology uses, and electronic waste recycling facility, and numerous special use considerations, of course, oak tree permits, residential and industrial developments and redevelopments. And on a personal note, I want to say Commissioner Cohen has just been a valuable part of this process. He's an engaging, very, very intelligent and warm person. I consider him a good person, a good friend, and I'm really sorry to see you go from this process, Commissioner Cohen. You've been a very valuable part of this process. So thank you for everything you've done. And I know this isn't the last we're going to see of you in terms of helping everybody in this commission and everybody in the city. With that said, is there any other commissioners that would like to make any comments about Commissioner Kohan? Go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd just like to echo your own comments. I've always appreciated Mr. Cohen's expertise, his competence, and his professionalism. And as you say, I'm sure we haven't heard the last of them. Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I also wanted to echo what's just been said. It was a pleasure to work with you. You added a lot to our discussions and to everything we did, and I wish you the best. And I know, like they have said, we won't see here the last of you right now. So that's great.
Any other commissioner come?
I also want to say farewell to Commissioner Cohen, but I'm sure it's not a farewell. It's been a strange time to work with you, and I really appreciate all the contributions that you've made for all of these discussions. I am a wiser person for having listened to you over the last two years. Thank you very much.
And with that said, Commissioner Cohen, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much. I want to thank city staff for their excellent help and transition through this process. They've been immaculate in running the city through these difficult times. I want to thank the board and the mentorship I received here on the commission, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the city in other capacities. Thank you all.
And again, I have no doubt that this is not the last we've heard in terms of you helping us out in various different ways. I didn't know, Madam Clerk, is there anybody else that wanted to make any comments for Commissioner Cohen? I see from my agenda if there was any other members of the community. I didn't know if there was anybody else that asked to speak. Okay, I'm assuming not. So again, thank you much, Mr. Commissioner Cohen. Again, I look forward to seeing you soon. And with that, we'll go to the next thing, which is to welcome brand-new Commissioner Justin Link. The commission would like to welcome Commissioner Justin Link. And I would note for the record that Commissioner Link has already been sworn in. Would you like to speak, Commissioner Link, just to say a few words?
Yes, if only to say that I am excited and humbled to serve our city, and I hope to provide some insight to the commission on my expertise in traffic and transportation. Appreciate it.
Welcome and thanks for being here. And then before we get to the nominations, I just want to say a brief word to thank council member Adam for having the confidence in me to appoint me. And again, sad enough to actually do it in place of Commissioner Cohen, who just did a fantastic job. But I take my appointment to this very seriously. I appreciate the unanimous support of the city council in terms of that nomination as well. And again, this is very important to me, and I will do the best I can to make sure that I'm doing everything possible to protect the city and go through the process in terms of being a planning commissioner. With that, then we will go to item E, which is nominations for chair, at which point I will hand this over to interim deputy director Finley.
Thank you, Chair Lanson. I would like to open the nominations for the election of Chair of the Planning Commission for 2020, 2021. Excuse me. Are there any nominations? Chair Lanson?
I don't know if I can nominate, but I would like to nominate Commissioner Bus to be Chair of our commission for the next year.
Okay, Commissioner Lanson nominates Chair Bus. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, the nominations are closed. And will the clerk please prepare for a vote?
Commissioner Bus?
I will say yes.
Commissioner Link?
Aye.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Lanson?
Yep.
Motion carries five zero.
So Chair Bus, you now get to open for Vice Chair.
You got it. Thank you very much, Commissioner Lanson, for nominating me. I will do my best to try to follow in your very large footsteps right now. I would like to go ahead and start by opening nominations and election of the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for 2021. Are there any nominations? Sharon?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Newman.
Commissioner Newman has been nominated by Commissioner McMahon. Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, nominations are closed. Will the clerk please prepare the vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yep.
Commissioner Link?
Aye.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bus?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Congratulations, Commissioner Newman. You'd like to speak, please?
I want to thank Commissioner McMahon for her confidence in me, and I look forward to continue working together with all of you. Thanks very much.
Are there any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, I guess we'll move along. Next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes of January 11th, 2021. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Lanson?
I'd like to move for the minutes to be approved.
We are ready to vote then. Will the secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yep.
Commissioner Link?
He wasn't there.
I believe I should probably abstain since I was not at the last meeting.
Abstain. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
I too must abstain. I missed the meeting.
And Chair Bus?
Aye.
Motion carries three two.
Perfect. We will now be moving to section eight, the Planning Commission public hearings. We'd like to go ahead. Will the clerk please open the public hearing for eight A?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 8A, Special Land Use Permit SUP 2020-70685 to allow storage and wholesaling of private vehicles with incidental web-based retail sales in an existing industrial building located at 2649 Townsgate Road, number 100. The applicant is GP Motorsports LLC.
Good evening, Commissioners, applicants, and staff. My name is Zara Slim, Senior Planner, and I'll begin our presentation. As it was announced, this is a special use permit for 2020-70685, GP Motorsports, 2649 Townsgate Road, building 100. So, wait. And also, as described, it's to allow storage and wholesaling of private vehicles with incidental web-based retail sales. A little bit of background, the Townsgate Business Center Industrial Office Complex was established with DP 1977-360. The subsequent application that was filed, and also the reason for the presentation tonight, was 2020-70685 SUP for wholesaling of vehicles with diminutive retail sales. Project description is as follows. It's basically the use of a tenant space within an existing industrial building to store wholesale collectible and exotic vehicles. All the vehicles will be stored indoor. There'll be no outside display of vehicles, no servicing or repair of vehicles. There is going to be some internet-based retail sales. Most of the other sales are going to be to other dealerships. There'll be up to two vehicles allowed for staging and parking area. And just to clarify, staging would be for the purposes of having a car prepared for a prearranged meeting for a customer to see the car or to transport the car. Hours of operation will be 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and they'll have up to three employees. Again, continuing the description here, parking, they actually have up to, they have eight parking spaces that they're providing. Only four are required by Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. Here is a view of the site plan. And this would be their building right here. Here's a closer kind of a location on site. There you see the building, the tenant space actually, along with the eight parking spaces. Here's a tenant floor plan. Just a photo again, I think it's three of the eight spaces here, and that's kind of shown looking out towards Townsgate Road. And that's a picture of the front facade of the tenant space that would be occupied by the, or being proposed to be occupied by the business. So this is a special use permit for the wholesaling of auto sales, storage, including ancillary retail sales, as mentioned. It does require Planning Commission approval in the M1 zone. Generally, Planning Commission must determine that the proposed use is not in conflict with surrounding properties and uses. Planning Commission, your role is to basically make the five findings as follows. Project is consistent with the Thousand Oaks general plan. Project does comply with all applicable laws, regulations, and policies, including Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. Project will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare. Project has been reviewed in conformance with CEQA. And proposed use at the proposed location will be compatible with land uses in the nearby vicinity. In order to evaluate, I want to mention that project site is Zone M1. It's an industrial park, which allows for automobile storage and sales, subject to the approval of a special use permit. The proposal meets and will comply with all applicable laws, regulations, and policies, including the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code as part of this and the building permit process, if it's allowed to go through. Project will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare. The operation does not involve any hazardous material production, handling, or emissions thereof. No onsite servicing or repairing of any of the associated inventories being proposed. Project has been reviewed in conformance with the provisions of California Environmental Quality Act, as mentioned. This will be an interior modification to an existing building for vehicle storage and sales, and that's a minor improvement. Also qualifies for a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 of CEQA. Proposed use is compatible with land uses in the vicinity. Nearby uses include electrical supply company, contractor, material storage, wine production and sales. I should also mention there is a storage component, or warehousing, if you will, to all three of these uses. This is just a map kind of showing the surrounding land uses in relation to the site that we're discussing. Recommendation is as follows. Staff recommends Planning Commission approve SUP 2020-70685 based on the findings and subject to the suggested conditions contained in the attached resolution. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you. We're open for questions. I'll be available for questions as well as applicant. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Senior Planner Slim. Are there any questions or comments of staff from Commissioners? I can't see all of you on my screen, so if you do have any questions, just speak up.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your presentation. Just three quick questions. You mentioned during your presentation that there are no hazardous materials involved here. These are cars that do carry oil, gas, that sort of thing. Are there any special environmental concerns around an application like this?
So typically, no. I'm probably not the best suited person to fully answer this question. I do know just from my experience that when these materials are not contained, let's say, in a car, if they are in a separate container, or they're being transported or delivered as that substance alone, there are other regulations that are involved. The fire department would be involved. In this case, they've already applied for an at-risk tenant improvement for their building permits. And at this point, I don't believe there's been any such concern or any kind of requirement for them to address that sort of thing. This is, you know, again, I don't believe that is the case. I can ask maybe the applicant if they have anything to add to that and while they're processing this, if they've come across that or have been required or asked to supply additional mitigation measures for such a thing.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I know auto dealers of all kinds are subject to additional environmental regulations. I just was asking from a planning standpoint, it sounds like you're saying there are no additional considerations or requirements here in terms of obtaining the permit. Is that a fair reading?
That is correct. That is correct, Commissioner, yes.
All right, okay. Are there any additional concerns during the pandemic, which we all hope is winding down? But again, just from a planning standpoint, in issuing a permit for an activity like this, are there any special concerns around disease prevention?
Well, that's, it's kind of funny that you mentioned that. This is, and again, from a planning perspective, one of the businesses that would be probably more appropriate in a pandemic situation, because as I mentioned, the majority of sales, the majority of people interacting with the business owner here is going to be online. These are going to be, it's an inventory that's going to be marketed online. And so a lot of that interaction and communication is going to happen via internet and other means, not necessarily in person. This is not a retail, generally a retail, majority of the retail-oriented type of dealership, where you do have customers coming in, shaking hands, any of that stuff. And again, I'm happy to turn it over to the applicant, but this is according to their proposal and to their narrative that they've submitted.
Very good, thanks. And then the final question I have is regarding the storage or what's involved here. These are exotic cars, I presume fairly expensive vehicles. I presume public safety has signed off on this. There are no additional public safety concerns around this application?
We have not received any comments whatsoever with that. Right now, they are, again, they've submitted for their TI, so that's the life safety building portion of it, and that's still being reviewed. But as far as any other comments, any other memos, I've only received memos, I think, from fire, and that's been it.
Okay, very good. Again, thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any further questions from any Commissioners?
Chairman Bus, this is Commissioner Lanson. I have just a quick question.
Yes, sir, please go ahead.
Mr. Slim, thank you for your report. Just to kind of follow up on your last comment, where you said in terms of getting notices, have you received any comments from the public community, anybody about this application at all?
None whatsoever. And it's fair to say that they've had their sign up a lot longer than the law requires. So they've had it up for probably, you know, at least maybe two months. So, yeah, actually, yeah, about two months, so not a word.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Anyone else? All right, then I just have one quick question for Senior Planner Slim. Next door, directly next door, is a wine production facility, I believe. And do they have tasting inside? Is that a retail facility?
We're talking about Nuba Wines?
Yes.
As far, you know, I don't know the specifics of their business operation, but I do know they have tents set up outside. I don't know what relationship that would necessarily have with the, you know, with the dealership itself, but yeah, that's kind of, I've seen tents outside. So I don't know if they do some of that wine tasting kind of outside, if people maybe come into the counter. I know a lot of operations right now where they're coming in, they'll place their order, they'll pick up their bottle and then go outside, consume it. But that's just, again, speculation. I don't know. I haven't seen the operation, but just judging on what's on the outside there, an exterior.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because we're saying that this facility next door is going to be restricted primarily or almost entirely to internet sales. And so I just want to confirm that we're holding the facilities next door to a different standard, or will the purveyor of these exotic cars want to use this as a retail facility in the future? And is that in any way impacted by what we're doing?
Okay, so, yeah, in fairness, like, you know, like I did mention, there is going to be a small percentage of that retail that does happen, again, via internet. But there is a possibility, I mean, you know, if their doors are open, there is a possibility of somebody walking in and maybe, you know, taking a look at the cars, making an appointment, because these are supposed to be by appointment only. So basically, you know, you can come in and say, luckily, I've got an appointment sometime to come see a car, and that could be very well a patron that might be at the wine, at the wine place next door. That's completely a feasible, you know, scenario, and there's nothing to prevent that. But again, I think, I guess where we're coming from and what we've understood from the applicant is the model here is not your typical open retail dealership. It's really, it's kind of behind the scenes. It's really more of internet-based.
Okay, that makes more sense. I assume their clientele is going to be fairly limited, but I wanted to make sure that we weren't putting a restriction on one tenant in the building that other tenants didn't have. That's all I was trying to clarify.
Yeah, no, they'll have their doors open. We're not saying they're locking their doors or anything like that. So, you know, there isn't that, you know, double standard or anything like that.
Perfect, copy that. Thank you so much for your presentation.
You're sure, you're welcome.
Now, we're going to ask for the applicant and the applicant's representative to speak. They will have 15 minutes. Please state your name and city residence for the record. I believe the applicant's name is Ron Geiger. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Hi, yes, Ronald Geiger. My name's Ronald Geiger. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you. And what's your city residence?
Agora Hills.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. You are free to proceed.
Okay, well, I appreciate giving the floor and all of your time in this matter. We have decided to do this little project in Westlake Village. I've been in the car business myself for 38 years, and my partner sitting next to me has been an automotive software guy for 30 years, or a little over 30 years. And I've amassed quite a clientele of people that have followed me for many, many years, as you can imagine, and mostly of the higher net worth or affluent client. But I've also developed relationships with brands and with dealers all over the country, and I've worked for a couple of companies that did a large amount of wholesale business. So in the waning years of my career, I'm kind of stepping away from the high-paced retail environment and working with my database of clients and with the dealer base that I have. And I buy and sell and trade cars, much like a stock trader would, but at the exotic car level. And so the main reason we need the facility is to house those vehicles as they come and go through. So most of the cars, some of them never even come to the dealership. I buy a car in a different state, ship it to another state, and we don't see it if it's a wholesale deal. But any retail deals or customers that would be my customers that may want to order a specific car for me that I go out and find for them, bring it in, and we deliver it immediately. It doesn't sit in the showroom or sit on the lot. So it's not your typical big car dealership with inventory sitting around. Everything comes and goes pretty quick, and there's never a lot of cars sitting at any one time. So we looked for a place that was near my home and the area where I live and work, and same with my partner, and we were able to find this nice place on Townsgate. And it's perfect size for what we want to do, and it's a good location.
Thank you very much, or is that, are you, I failed to introduce your partner. I didn't realize was with you, Rusty.
I'm sorry. My partner is Rusty West. And, you know, I wasn't sure what else you were looking for me to cover, but I'd be glad to answer any questions in more detail about what we are attempting to do and why.
You got it, and I will proceed to ask my fellow Commissioners if they have any questions of the applicant. I think that I'm getting a lot of nods no, so I think we're good to go. So we can proceed to public comments. I do not see any public comments, as far as I can tell. Correct me if I'm incorrect, Secretary?
No, there are none.
There are none?
No, just Rusty.
All right, then we will go back to staff for any follow-up comments.
We do not have any follow-up comments. The applicant was good to work with, and we feel this is a good project to go forward with. Thank you.
You got it. I will, I, at this point, would proceed back to the applicant for any rebuttal comments, but considering that the discussion's been remarkably limited, I will assume you have nothing further to add.
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Then if Commissioners have no further questions, we can go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, and then I will now open up the floor for a motion and/or any further discussion, which my Commissioners.
Commissioner Lanson, I'll go ahead.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lanson.
I think in this difficult time we're in, we're looking for creative new ideas and creative new businesses, and this obviously satisfies the issue. I think it's a great idea in terms of using that space, some experienced people that know what they're doing. Again, the report, Mr. Slim, was fantastic in terms of going through the issues. So I'm in favor of the project, so I will move that the Planning Commission find the project exempt in accordance with 15301 of CEQA and approve the special use permit 2020-70685 based on the findings and subject to the suggested conditions of approval that were included within the resolution.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Lanson. Does anybody else have any follow-up questions before we go to a vote? I think we're good to go then. Will the secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yep.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bus?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, then I have this statement to read. Any agreed party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with Community Development Department within 10 days. All right, and then we'll be moving. Congratulations to Ron Geiger and Rusty West, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, very much. We appreciate you very much. Have a great week.
You as well, sir.
Thank you. All right.
All right. Then we'll move on to, uh, eight B. We're going to open the, uh, the hearing for this one. Well, the clerk, please open the public hearing.
Hearing having been advertised as required by laws hereby open to consider agenda item eight B. Special use permit SUP 2020 dash 70377, land division LD 2020 dash 70378, and oak tree permit OTP 2020 dash 70379 to allow encroachment into natural terrain greater than 25% gradient to accommodate the construction of a new two-story 10,000 square foot office building with new walls, associated grading, hardscape and landscape, including a land division to create two lots out of one. Encroachment within the protected zones and pruning of nine oak trees, removal of one protected oak tree and relocation of one protected oak tree located at 4500 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, APN 687 dash zero dash zero one two dash zero eight five. The applicant is Haynes 4500 Thousand Oaks LP.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, presenting on behalf of staff is Associate Planner, Don Nielsen. Don Nielsen, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Chair Bus, members of the planning commission, members of the public. Uh, so the project is for a special use permit located at 4500 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Uh, it's in order to construct, it's a new 10,000, uh, two-story 10,000 square foot office building that'll encroach into, uh, slopes of 25% or greater. Uh, as, um, staff had already mentioned, the, the project also includes the land division to divide a single existing lot into two different lots, remove one protected oak tree, relocate one protected oak tree, uh, encroach into the protected zone and, um, allow the pruning of nine different oak trees as well as, uh, new retaining walls, associated, uh, the associated parking for the development, grading, hardscaping and landscaping. This project is coming before the planning commission for three different reasons. Uh, one, it's a office uses, they are allowed within the M1 zone. However, they are subject to approval by the plan, um, approval of a special use permit by the planning commission. Two, the project is grading, uh, proposing grading within natural sloping terrain within, um, that have 25% or greater gradients. Uh, and three, that the final one is the project is proposing to remove a non-exempt oak tree that has a diameter of 24 inches or greater. Uh, so here you can actually see the site. The project is about halfway between, uh, Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon Drive along via Merida. Here you can actually see this is the existing site. It is currently, um, uh, developed with an existing single story o- office building with a shared driveway and parking lot. And here you can kind of see this is, uh, the project sites, uh, again, with some of the surrounding uses. Of, of note is that this project site, uh, it existing is an office building and it is surrounded entirely by other office buildings uh, to the north, south, east and west. Uh, also this, uh, this site is part of a larger, um, office industrial complex, which goes up to, uh, East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. So everything that you can see up here, this is all part of a larger, um, office, uh, park that was approved in 1998, uh, 1988 by the planning commission. Um, so for that, as part of that, uh, 88 approval, the planning commission approved, uh, removal of, uh, oak trees, encroachments into oak trees, pruning of oak trees as well as encroachments into, uh, slopes of 25% or greater, uh, gradient. Uh, additionally, the applicant in 2020, they submitted, it was a pre-application for the project. Uh, and then in July of the same year, the applicant submitted, uh, the current project that's before you. The site itself, it's an existing 3.2 acre, um, lot that has a general plan land use designation of industrial with an M1 or it's industrial park, uh, zoning designation. Uh, the site is located within, as I previously, uh, stated, an existing office development and it has a natural sloping terrain of 25% or more as well as existing oak trees. And here you can see the site in its greater, uh, in the kind of the greater context with an oblique view. Uh, the existing parcel is approximately, uh, right here with that building. You can see, uh, the existing, um, office development with Thousand Oaks Boulevard over here and Lakeview Canyon Drive just off the screen. Uh, going into the project details a little bit more, um, uh, in depth. So for this project, as I said before, it's a new 10,000 square foot, uh, two-story building. It's a podium style building with parking on the, uh, on the bottom floor with the actual office space located directly above it. Uh, the, and the parking lot, it's going to be half 40 vehicle parking spaces. I'm sorry, the parking, um, level. It's going to have 40 vehicle parking spaces and the building itself is going to be 35 feet tall. Uh, there is going to be, uh, encroachments into 25% slopes or greater with a, not only for the building, but also for a new pedestrian pathway that'll connect from via Merida to the existing building and then beyond. And you'll, I'll be able to show you that, uh, that pedestrian pathways, uh, soon enough. There's also going to be a detached trash enclosure, which has been reviewed and approved by the, uh, trash hauler and, uh, also other associated landscaping, cardscaping, retaining walls and utilities associated with that development. Uh, the third application for this project, it's for a land division in order to divide that existing 3.2 acre lot into two, uh, legal lots. Uh, this parcel, the project that's proposed tonight is going to be on parcel eight B. So it's the smaller of the two parcels. Um, and it's the one that's closest to via Merida. And just so that you are aware, as a part of any type of approval for that land division, uh, since it is part of a larger, um, in, uh, office park, uh, there are going to be some reciprocal, um, access and parking agreements, just because it does, uh, go over, uh, the shared access driveway. Uh, and then the third application type for this project, it is the oak trees in order to remove one oak, one protected oak tree, relocate one protected oak tree and then encroach into the protected zone, um, and the pruning of nine other oak trees. I do just want to point out, this may, uh, differ a little bit from, um, other reports you may have heard. It's like, why is there going to be three, uh, we saw that there was going to be three removed. I'll get into that in just a little bit, but, um, once I start covering over the oak trees, but I just wanted to, uh, highlight that for you. Here you can actually see, this is the site plan. Uh, the outline of the building is here in gold. The vehicle access is in blue. Um, and then the pedestrian access, uh, for the site, it's right, starts right here off of via Meruda, um, Merida. And then it comes up here under the oak trees in front of the building up to the accessway, which is all the pedestrian access is right here, uh, which faces towards the existing private driveway. The pedestrian access then continues up through the site across the, uh, primary, uh, act, uh, vehicle driveway and comes up to the northern portion of the building in order to go through, uh, the existing, uh, oak trees, which are, are to remain. Then comes up to hook into the existing building and then into the greater pedestrian network of that office park. And so you can kind of get a visual of exactly what is happening at this site. Here we have, it's two different pictures, uh, from different angles of, uh, the project site from via Merida. Uh, the green arrows are pointing to the general area of where, uh, the building is going to be located. Here you can see in the top picture, uh, these oak tree, this cluster of oak trees, that's actually going to be blocking, uh, the building when you're going northbound on via Merida. Uh, in this oak tree right here, this is the, uh, the tree that's proposed to be removed. Uh, that's going to be the approximate location, even though you can see it now, um, and you'll see in the later in the presentation, there's going to be a lot of different, uh, new proposed vegetation that would help screen that building. And then here we're moving into the interior of the site. Uh, so you can see pictures of the, uh, the project site from that, uh, private driveway. Again, the green arrows point to the approximate location of where that building is going to be going. Uh, in terms of the slope, so the proposed project, it is going to be encroaching into gradients of 25% or greater uh, of the existing, of the proposed parcel, uh, area, 35,000, uh, over 35,000 square feet, um, of grading will have to occur. So that's going to be the, the area itself. Of that graded area of that 35,000 square feet, uh, 16, just over 16,000 square feet, um, is going to be within locations of, uh, that have a slope of 25% or more. So it's, it's less than half, uh, of the area is going to be, um, uh, have the slopes of 25%. I do want to point out, uh, this, uh, map over here, you can see the dark blue areas that, uh, those are the slopes of 25% or more. Uh, white, blue and white, those are areas that are less than 25%. And then additionally, so I here can also see this is included in the grading area. Um, it's the new pedestrian walkway, um, in order to access the site. Furthermore, the project in terms of the actual volume of grading, they are estimating about 6,000 square feet of, uh, cubic, I'm sorry, 6,000 cubic yards of, uh, fill will need to be removed. And then they would, uh, use 2,000 cubic yards to actually fill in the site and therefore it would require 4,000 cubic feet of export. Now looking at this project and comparing it to the city's grading ordinance, um, be, since it is encroaching to those 25 square feet, uh, staff was looking at, is there ways to, uh, potentially minimize those encroachments? Um, however, after reviewing the plans, reviewing the sites, um, characteristics and the conversations with the, with the applicant team, um, it does appear that the project, it was designed to minimize the amount of grading within those, uh, the slopes of 25% or more. Um, and that is because it's, uh, where the location is, it's in order to help also, uh, preserve the existing mature oak trees that are on the site itself. Cause if you were to locate it in other locations of the site, it'd be impacting more oak trees. Um, additionally, that building, um, it is integrated into the slope. So effectively they're taking kind of a cookie cutter, putting it down into the slope and carving it out. So they're, they're trying to limit the amount of grading within, uh, across the rest of the site. Uh, the building itself is not visible from Thousand Oaks Boulevard, uh, because there's going to be some natural terrain features directly to the north of it. That's going to be shielding it. And then you're also going to have other existing, um, uh, oak trees from the south that are going to be, uh, uh, blocking it that way. Oh, and then, uh, also all the manufactured slopes that are proposed, uh, they're at a maximum, um, gradient of two, of a two to one gradient. Uh, so that is what's allowed, um, per the city's grading ordinance. Uh, additionally, just looking at this project site, um, it's not identified as a prominent land form or ridge form or ridgeline, um, as identified in the city's conservation element, um, or any of the, the updates from there. Uh, also it's not part of a larger existing or even proposed open space system, uh, according to the open space element. And that's really because this kind of hill area within this office complex, it's isolated. So there's no opportunities for it to actually connect to that larger open space network. There's, uh, pure, uh, urban, um, urban developments to the north, south, east and west of these, uh, of this location. Um, additionally, the project, it does comply with the city's grading ordinance, uh, in terms of those procedural standards. Uh, also that manufactured, uh, manufactured slopes, they are going to be, uh, they are required to be irrigated in our landscape and irrigated according to the city's grading ordinance. Uh, and all of that will also be checked, not only during the city's, uh, the public works review of the grading permit, but also during the landscape plan check. Uh, in terms of the protected trees, uh, there are 28 existing oak trees on site. That's not counting the other, uh, non-protected trees. Uh, originally, um, so in the applicant staff, uh, in the applicant's oak tree report, they're identifying three trees that are going, uh, three oak trees that are going to be removed. After reviewing it and having, uh, uh, and having a conversation or city staff had a conversation with the city arborist, uh, it identified that only one oak tree, um, one oak tree, protected oak tree qualifies to go before, uh, the city for, um, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Yeah. So only one oak tree, uh, triggers a planning commission review. And so that's number 2707. And the reason for that, it is, it does have a diameter of 24 inches. But that tree, uh, the city arborist of the consult, city consultant, they did find that it was, uh, warranted to remove that tree because it is in declining health. It had a, uh, health grade of D, uh, appearance of D. And they did identify that there's extensive, uh, uh, dieback in the tree, uh, due to twig and, uh, leaf, uh, leaf failure on it. Um, and then there is also one oak tree that's, uh, going to be transplanted, which you can actually see here. Uh, it's going to be down here in purple next to the, um, uh, the proposed, uh, trash enclosure. Uh, that is, uh, two, about two inches in diameter. So it does meet the city's, uh, threshold for an ordinance, but is of a size and the, the city's, uh, uh, consultant arborist, uh, they did identify that this tree, it is, it's of a size that it could be, uh, potentially successfully transplanted, uh, elsewhere on the site. Uh, so staff did, uh, get that, uh, that confirmation there. Uh, and here you can see in red, this is that, that one oak tree that would be removed. And then the other nine oak trees that would have the encroachment into the protect, the drip line and the protected zone, uh, you can see here is primarily because of the new pedestrian pathway that's going from via Meridia all the way up into the, to the new building. There's only, uh, two trees that would only be encroached upon by, um, uh, by the exist, uh, by the proposed building. And so you can see here, if you trace the line, it's only because of that, uh, this pathway that you'll be able to, uh, it goes into the drip line and the protected zones of those trees. And then that third tree that I had mentioned, um, it's number 2703. It's in the middle of the, uh, vehicle driveway. It does not, it's not of a size that actually, um, that it would be protected by the city's, uh, oak tree ordinance itself. So it's, it's smaller than that. It's not even on, um, the city wouldn't even be able to, to have the say over that, that particular tree. Now moving on to, uh, the actual building itself. So here we have the elevation. So, uh, these are just the strict drawings from it. Uh, the top one, these are, uh, the, these two are the most prominent locations and the most prominent elevations that you would be seeing. So that's from via Meridia and then, uh, the south, southern view, which is that private driveway. Uh, the, as you can see here in the parking area, uh, this is the parking level. And then here's the podium with the office space, uh, built on top of that. Uh, the parking itself, it's actually going to be screened from, uh, from any, uh, from view, uh, by its, uh, landscape screens. Uh, they're going to be installed along the building itself. And then here we have, these are the other two elevations. Um, really of note for this east elevation, this one faces into that existing building on the site. Uh, this is, you're not going to see, uh, this down here. That's actually going to be, it's a concrete wall with, uh, with, um, earth on the other side of that. Uh, but it's just drawn this way. And then, uh, the bottom one, that is what's facing, it's the existing, um, elevation, uh, in hill to the north and then the, uh, the other office park. Uh, and in terms of the architectural design, the proposed structure, it does hold a lot of influence from the existing uses and the existing buildings, uh, in sight. Uh, the current office park has one, two and three story buildings. And it's a really, this building, it does fit the character, um, of the, of the greater office park. Cause there, there are slight variations in architectural style throughout it, uh, but they all have kind of the cohesive look to it. And so this project, it does take that, some of those, uh, cohesive, um, units, but still, um, modernizes them. And so here you can see, this is just a zoomed in version of the floor plan. So this is the first floor plan. You have the private driveway over here. You're coming up here. This is the parking deck, um, that you have. This is, uh, where the elevator, the stairs, everything is on, is at. Um, of note, you can see here, there's a zoomed in version. There's going to be a, a proposed bike room, um, as well for this site. Uh, and then here you can actually see, this is the proposed, uh, floor plan, uh, for the site. So it, uh, enclosed in the dark lines, that's all going to be the office space. And then you have, um, outdoor decks, uh, surrounding that area. In terms of the parking, uh, the proposed project, it would only require 34 parking spaces per code. However, the applicant is proposing to, uh, install 40 parking spaces with that bicycle room. And then in terms of the landscaping, so the, the city, uh, the off-street parking requirements, they do, uh, require that 10% of the interior, um, of like, uh, if it was a normal flat parking lot, 10% of that interior area would have to be landscaped. Since this is a parking structure, that 10% landscape requirement then goes to the perimeter of the site. However, as you can see here from the conceptual landscape plan, the, um, the applicant, they are going to be leaving the rest of the, the site uh, basically effectively undisturbed. So the site, it does meet that 10% landscape requirement by quite a bit. Uh, and then since we are on the landscape plan check, this i- it is just a conceptual landscape plan that we do require so that we can take a look and make sure that the proposed project, it meets the intent of the city's design guidelines. Now this conceptual landscape plan will then be translated into, um, it's a landscape plan check, uh, in which city staff, uh, the, uh, landscape consultant, city's landscape consultant, as well as public works, we review it to make sure that it, it does comply with the city's, uh, design guidelines and regarding landscaping, uh, and that it meets the, um, uh, the water saving requirements, uh, that are, uh, required by the state as well. But here we have it here just so that you can reference it if need be. In terms of outreach and the public correspondence, the applicant, they did state that they, uh, contacted some of the surrounding property owners, um, and other interested groups. Uh, and they then indicated that various owners, they support, uh, adjacent property owners, they supported the project. But if, I will defer to the applicant to, to expand on that if need be. In terms of public correspondence, uh, staff has received none to date regarding the formal submission of the project. Now, uh, for the environmental review, uh, this project, it is exempt from, uh, the provisions of CEQA under section 15 through to three for new construction, under sections 15, 304 for minor alterations to land. Under sections fifteen, three oh four for minor alterations to land, specifically it's regarding new landscaping in the oak trees. Sections fifteen, three, one, five for a minor land division. And as well as fifteen, three, three, two for an infill development, and staff also did not find that any of the six exceptions to the exemptions. Apply in this case. So therefore, with all of that taken into account, staff concludes that the design, it meets the city standards, codes and policies. It's compatible with the surrounding land uses, it integrates with the surrounding office park. And it's designed to reduce that encroachment into the slopes greater than twenty five percent. And minimize its impacts of protected oak trees. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve SUP twenty twenty dash seven zero three seven seven. LD twenty twenty dash seven zero three seven eight. And OTP twenty twenty dash seven zero three seven nine. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the draft resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Associate Planner Don Nielsen. Are there any questions or comments of staff from commissioners? Don Lanson, please.
Thank you, thank you Chairman Bus, Associate Planner Nielsen, thank you for your report, I just had a few quick questions. Looking at the staff report, item five, kind of just something that was unusual, I had not seen before. In terms of reserving an ability to make minor changes. To various parts of the project in the event, I guess certain things happen, I'm just curious, what kind of minor changes would be subject to that kind of modification, if you know?
Are you referring to condition number five?
Correct, sorry.
In the resolution, okay, so for that, it it honestly does depend on the extent of. What the applicant is proposing to do, so if there's, sometimes it's could be material changes. Because if, and we've experienced this before, the applicant, they may be proposing material, and then when it comes time for. For construction, that material is no longer available, so it's could be a change out of the material. If building codes may have changed, and so they made me to like, put in a new, new door, new routes, different windows, different things of that nature, so there's. Honestly, it really does depend on the scope of what's being proposed before the. Proposed to staff, and so there is that conversation that we have to have with them.
So thi- this is not city imposed changes, it's it's outside factors that may affect the ability to have modern minor modifications, correct?
E- exactly, now, some sometimes there could be some city requirements, or actually code requirements. That that may have changed, that would necessitate a change in the actual project, and then we just go through, then we have that discussion with the applicant team. But really, that condition number three, that is in there, I'm sorry. Yeah, condition number five, that is in there primarily for applicant-driven changes to the to an actual project.
And it's not something that would require them to come back before the planning commission or any further process, correct?
That is correct, so the purpose of the minor of the of these minor changes is something that can be done. Can be approved by the community development director. And that's where staff's review of those proposed changes comes in, because if it is of a level. That we feel comfortable, it still meets the intent of the planning commission approval. We can still move forward with it to the, move it forward to the community development director. However, if the change, and it also depends on the number of changes, because there could be a number of different smaller ones. But cumulatively, if they start to really change the project, then we have that conversation with the director, who could then either, they would say. They feel comfortable moving it forward through that minor change process. Or we could actually bump it up to a planning commission level, and that's so it it is, it is a dependent on what's being proposed.
Okay, all right, I I appreciate that. My next question concerns the walkway, and I know you said that the encroachment, really most the encroachment for the trees is a very minor to the building, but most around the walkway it looks like. Obviously, the trees have roots, is is there some way, again, I'm not necessarily a roots expert, but to make sure that that whatever ADA pathway is not going to be modified by the roots of a tree. Over time.
Yeah, so there's. A couple of different aspects to it, so. One, we do have conditions built into the into the project that are there to protect the roots of a tree of all the oak trees, so that's just for the. Not only the city's oak tree ordinance, but also per our cities. The city arborist, when they reviewed it, they they made the recommendation, so those recommendations were incorporated into the actual project. And then post-construction, it is. The actual design of that, it's actually falls to our building and safety division, so they review. The projects and the proposed walkways in order to ensure that. Any of those designs, they do help protect against root root intrusions or you know, try and prevent some buckling. There's also going to be, additionally, we have conditions built into the project that are for maintenance. Of the site, so the applicants, they can't just build it and then be done with it. They're going to have to continually watch particularly that pedestrian walkway, the ADA walkway. To ensure that if there's any buckling or any issues due to roots from those oak trees. That those will have to be addressed, because it is, we we are dealing with accessibility requirements to the site.
Are the trees in the area, though, I'm assuming are mature enough where they're not going to be having extensive root growth from this point forward?
That that is correct, vast majority of the trees that are going to be encroached upon by this walkway, they are all fully mature trees. When I'm when I'm looking, when I'm reviewing the oak tree report. So there's two, they're still growing, but those are, those can actually be dealt with going through compliance with the the state bill, the city's building code.
Okay, and then just to make, we're sure we're clear, obviously, to make sure that we're asking the questions the public would ask. For the one tree that you're looking to remove, why can't that be transplanted?
So the one that's, are you? If you'll bear with me really quick.
Two oh two seven, I think was the number.
Yeah, so for that tree. It was a conversation, yeah, it was two twenty seven oh seven. The twenty four inches, so there's. After having that discussion with the city's consultant, the consultant arborist, the tree itself, it it is in failing health. As I've mentioned before, it has a grade D, which is means it's just above almost being dead. And when they went out to the site to inspect that particular tree, they did note. There were significant twig and leaf dieback on the actual tree. And that there was other damage to the actual structure, I mean, I I can, I can defer to John Oblinger. Who is the applicant's arborist, he may be able to be a little bit more eloquent on talking about the tree. Itself, but based off of the conversations that staff had with the the city arborist. It did not appear that this would be a sign, a tree that could be a candidate for transplant, because most likely if. If that tree were to be tried to transplant, it would end up dying.
And the other one, though, that you do have subject to being transplanted, but I noted from one of the conditions, there's a fund. Being created by the applicant in the event that it doesn't survive the transplant, right?
That is correct, so any, whenever there is a tran- transplant of an oak tree. We, the city, we do have standard conditions that are applied to ensure that these. Either the oak, the transplanted oak trees, they have the best chance of survival. Or just in in the case that they do end up failing or their health starts to degrade. We have the conditions built into the actual project to to first try and better the health of the tree. But then, in the event, and that's after two years, if the tree does end up failing. Those funds are then used to plant mitigate the three mitigation trees.
And I noticed, I think it just to work clear, because I know people have been asking this question, that the trees that are going to be replaced, you don't know where there's going to, they're going to be yet, because they, that would be a landscaping plan, I'm assuming after the fact.
It it'll formally come through, through the landscape plan check to identify, we do have, it's the conceptual landscape plan. The applicant, they are planting currently on that land, the conceptual landscape plan. They're identifying thirteen new coast live oak trees. And so based, excuse me, based off of the project plan, so if they're just removing the one oak tree, it is required. There's a mitigation set inside of the city's oak tree ordinance for a three to one replacement ratio. So, right now, this, the applicant is proposing to plant ten additional oak trees over the three that are required, so there'd be, we'd be getting thirteen oak trees. Over the single oak tree.
Okay, thank you, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McMahon. I believe you're muted, Commissioner McMahon.
Sorry about that, of those thirteen new oak trees, what are the sizes that are proposed?
So the city ordinance, we actually do have that down, if you'll bear with me really quick, I I am going to look it up. Because I can't remember it off the top of my head.
Excuse me, Chairman Band, this is Steve Kearns. The mitigation requirements, two twenty fours and one thirty six inch box for each tree being removed. The other sized trees that they're putting in the ground is on. Is not required by the ordinance, they're doing that voluntarily, so there's ten additional oak trees being planted. And we won't know the sizes of those trees until they go through the landscape plan check.
Okay, and do you expect them to be, you know, bigger than the two inches of the one that's being moved? Or are they going to be very small?
Yeah, generally, generally, a twenty four inch box tree is about two and a half inches.
Okay, I did have a couple more questions.
Commissioner McMahon, so ju- just wanted to direct you, it's condition number fifty nine, those are the mitigation trees. With the sizes that manager Kearns had mentioned.
Okay, thank you, and I don't know if this is relevant or not. But is this office building being built for one tenant or several tenants?
So right now, the, to staff's knowledge, it is only built for a single tenant, but I will defer to the applicant for a full. Explanation of that question.
Thank you, and one last question, which is probably also irrelevant. In this office park, are the other buildings vacant? Or are they fully occupied, do you know what the vacancy factor is?
I don't know what the vacancy factor is for the entire office park, they, most of the buildings, they are occupied, I I do think there are some vacancies there. I will, again, have to defer to the applicant to see if they do know a specific percentage for that.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner, do any other commissioners have any questions this time of staff? Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Nielsen, for your presentation. In your report, you mentioned that the, in nineteen eighty eight, there was a planning commission resolution. Allowing grading into twenty five percent of greater slope and allowing oak tree removal. So I understand why we're here regarding the special use permit and the lot division. But as a matter of process, why are, why are we here to review oak tree removals and the grading again?
So for this, and that's because the original nineteen eighty eight permit, that is, has been effectively built out. And so this project today, it is a new project for. In addition to what was already approved and built out according to the nineteen eighty eight permit. And the size of this proposed project, it is of such a scope that it's, it's not, it would not fall under. The city's minor modification process, and so this is a brand new permit. That we then have to go through and take and consider. And since it's a brand new permit, it triggers the the grading requirements and the oak tree requirements for us to to review. Staff, we do bring up the nineteen eighty eight permit approval one, so it is, so that. You do have knowledge of it, that it is a part of the history of this greater site. And it has in fact occurred at on this project site for that existing building. But because there was such a span in between the completion of of the effective build out of that site and this project and the scope. It was staff's review, just saying that this is a brand new permit for it, and so therefore. It triggers that, the new review and approvals for the encroachments and oak trees.
Okay, so it's a new project then?
Yes.
And then regarding, I just want to confirm regarding the ten thousand square foot scoping of the project. Does that cover both levels, the parking and the office space, or is it just the office space?
That'll just be the office space, so the ten thousand square feet, it's the office. The lobby, the restrooms, so that's, that's everything, the parking itself, since it's a non-habitable area, so it's non-occupiable. It does not fall into the ten thousand square feet.
Okay, so if we were to count that space, though, that that lower level, if you will. We'd really be talking about something in the neighborhood of the twenty thousand square foot building, is that correct?
That that is correct, because it's, since the the occupiable space is sitting on top of the parking lot.
Okay. Regarding the grading, the two hundred eighty six truck trips. Will the activities of of the, the net, the the truck trips. Will that, will that have any impact on operations at either Westlake High School or Oaks Christian?
So for that, it's, I did have a conversation with Public Works earlier today. About potential impacts and and the truck trips. Effectively, what happens is that, so if the project is approved by the planning commission tonight. And the applicant decides to move forward on it, they would have to submit to Public Works for it's a grading permit. And as part of that grading permit, the applicant, they have to come up with a haul route, so we're identifying identification of where. Those truck trips are going to be going. And really, it's specifically at that time, that city staff, we work with the applicant to minimize any potential impacts. On adjacent uses, so on adjacent sensitive uses. So like you mentioned, you have Westlake High School up on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and then you have Oaks Christian, which is to the east in city of Westlake Village. And so those are factored into it, into staff's consideration when we're working with the applicant team. On identifying the proper haul route for for those truck trips, so we don't have it right now, but it is part of that discussion that we do have to do.
Okay, I had the same question as well about the Los Robles Rehab Center down the street there. But but you're saying, since there there is no haul route established as yet. We can't really say whether trucks will be going down via Merida. Toward Agora Road or toward La Tienda rather, or toward T O Boulevard, we don't, we just don't know that yet, is that correct?
That that is correct, and that's just because the the haul route, it is determined at a later date, but again, we are. What's factored into that haul route, particularly from staff's staff's perspective, are all the sensitive uses within the the area.
Okay.
This is Carlos, if I could just quickly add a couple of comments regarding that. If the if the project is approved by the planning commission tonight. The applicant would have to submit for post-approval, post-approval plan check review. And they would submit a rough grading plan and then get into the precise grading plan that then. The Department of Public Works and Planning would then review and and apply the appropriate measures with, to follow with the compliance of the grading ordinance. And so at that time, we would even get a preliminary construction and staging plan, we'd have a better idea of what the. Exact grading calculations would be and the hauling route, and then apply all the appropriate measures, and. Before we even issue a building permit or a grading permit, we would have that pre-construction meeting with the applicant to further address these potential issues with with grading.
Okay, but but at this moment in time, though, we're we're unable to say. What the haul route would be, and therefore, whether there would be any additional traffic in the immediate neighborhood of either Westlake High School or. Oaks Christian or Los Robles Rehab Center, we just don't know whether haul route will go yet, correct?
That is accurate.
All right. Okay, I'm not sure whether you can answer this, or maybe the applicant can. Part of this application involves a division into two lots, why they need to do that, to subdivide the original lot?
I I will defer to the applicant for the full explanation.
Okay. On the tree removal of the single tree and the encroachments of some others. Mr. Nielsen, you mentioned the three to one, which is actually a thirteen to one replacement. For for tree two seven zero seven. Regarding the onsite replacements, do we know, are those all Quercus agrofolis, the coastal live oaks?
Yes, they are identified. Yeah, so identified on the conceptual landscape plan, they are all coastal live oaks.
Okay, very good. And there's, it it also mentions, and and this has come up already this evening. About two twenty four inches and one thirty six inch box, box trees.
Yes.
What is the approximate time span in years? For those twenty fours or thirty six to grow to the size of the tree that they are replacing?
I don't know the growth patterns for for the trees, I may actually have to defer to. Either if if one of the other city staff members knows the growth rate of the trees. Or even, so the applicant, they do have the city, their arborist, Mr. John Oblinger, he may be. he may be better able to answer that question on the, how many years it may take.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little unclear on that point, because the city's oak tree ordinance does give approximate heights for the box trees. It's in the eight to ten foot range for a twenty four inch and a, let's see, a twelve to fourteen foot range for a thirty six inch tree. But the oak tree report does not actually say the height of the tree that it's replacing, that these would replace. So I'm, I'm curious about how, how long a replacement period we're looking at. And then as a follow on to that, the report also said the city would be monitoring the health of these trees going forward. And my question on that is, is monitoring for, for what period, for how long is monitoring go on?
So in terms of mitigation trees, there is, it's a combination between both city staff and the applicant. So for transplant trees, the mitigation measures are the conditions they do require, it's, it's effectively, it's a two-year period. So after the tree has been transplanted, there is a one-year review period to check the health of the actual tree. And so if the tree is thriving, then, and it does appear, and according to the arborists, the tree does appear like it'll be successful transplantation, then no mitigation measures required, and the security funds are able to be released. However, if the tree is still either, if its condition has not improved, or if it has degraded, then there is another, the city holds on to those security funds for another year, and at which, at the end of that second year period, the health of that tree is then reviewed again. And so it depends on what the health of that tree is at that time, on what steps the city will take. Something very similar also occurs for the mitigation, mitigation trees. There is the review cycle that the city, we do have to go through to ensure that those mitigation trees do take.
Okay, but worst case scenario, and this is a hypothetical, but worst case, if all thirteen of the mitigation trees were to drop dead in the third year, would the city get involved in any way?
I will actually have to defer to manager Kearns on that one, because I am unsure on what the city, how the city would proceed in that.
If there are actual mitigation trees and they fell, we would require them to replace those trees. It, it's, you know, trees do die, and we acknowledge that, and we do try to replace those, those oak trees, you know, three to one ratio. Generally, if you catch, you see signs of failure, the tree is starting to decline in health, and we can have them monitor that and go through the permit process, at which time, if we allow them to remove it, we'd get three trees for each one taken out.
All right. And I mean, on, on that, it, it appeared to me when I, when I hiked around the grounds there, that, that the tree proposed for removal, twenty seven zero seven, had had fire damage of some sort, parts of the, parts of the trunk appeared pretty well burned. Had, had there been a fire in this area?
Not to my knowledge that this area had burned, but.
Or maybe some kind of disease, and I just, I don't know, I'm not an arborist, I don't know trees very well.
Yeah. So not to my knowledge that this area, I don't think burned. I could be wrong, because I'm not entirely sure of the entire, the full extent of the Woolsey Fire area. But it, it could also be a deep trunk areas, but I, I will defer to John Ollinger to potentially expand on that a little bit more.
Okay. Um, let's see. Regarding staging of construction vehicles, page seven of the site plans sets aside some areas for construction vehicles. The, the set aside areas appear relatively small, this is page seven of the plans. I'm not looking, this is in the site plans, the seventh page. The areas that are set aside are, are very small relative to the overall site. And my question on this is whether staff feels that this is sufficient for the number of construction vehicles involved with this project?
So for this, it's, it's a very preliminary staging for construction. And this is really identifying its offsite parking as well for, for this. We do expect that there's going to be some staging onsite as they are doing the construction and as they are doing all of the grading activities and the other construction. But in terms of just pure, it's like other parking or other materials, this, it is the start for this particular project as it's, as the project is submitted to Public Works and building and safety and planning for, it's our review. As senior planner Carlos had mentioned before, that is something that we do take a look at. It's, it's part of their supplemental requirement, is like, what is going to be the greater construction staging area that's going to be required for this project? So at the preliminary stages, this, this does suffice, it's really just to try and get the applicant to understand that we're in a constrained area, what is the initial preliminary construction staging going to be looking like? And then we can start addressing that as they are reviewing the project against codes and and fully understanding, it's like the, the, the full extent of the area needed for that construction staging.
Okay, I didn't realize these are offsite, so these are essentially set asides, offsite?
Effectively, and it's, I, I say offsite as, only because this parcel, it'll eventually be split in two, that's why we're doing the land division. So right now, it's, they would be considered onsite, because it is one parcel. But if they were to go and, if the planning commission were to approve the land division, and they were to record that land division with the county, say tomorrow, then it would be a technical offsite. But it's still within that greater office park. And one thing that would allow that to happen is that we, the office park, it does have those reciprocal, reciprocal agreements between the different property owners, or just between the different properties.
I see. My final question is regarding the bike storage room.
Yes.
Again, in the plans, it appears there are storage for five bikes in there. And the question on this is whether there's any set requirement for the number of bike parking spaces in new, new office construction projects?
So the city ordinance, there is no technical city ordinance that requires the bicycle parking. We do use, it's kind of like the rule of thumb, it's a ten percent of the, of the parking spaces that are being provided. So in this case, they are providing it forty spaces, so that's, they're doing, that would require four, four bicycle parking spaces. They would be providing five additional ones. We do have Kathy Gnome, she's a transportation engineer for, from Public Works. She will be able to expand a little bit more on that, on the bicycle parking requirements. But just so that you are also aware, the California Green Building Code, it does, that does have a bicycle parking requirement. And I think that is ten percent of all provided parking. There, we have, you have to have bicycle parking equivalent to ten percent of all provided parking. So it does depend in that case, but again, I will defer to Kathy on the, on the design of it.
I, I don't really have, oh, good evening, this is Kathy Now, Commissioner Newman. I don't have a lot more to add, except for we're really excited about how they're adding bicycle parking. They have a designated area, it looks like it's covered, it's, it's gonna, it's, as bicycle parking goes, you couldn't ask for a whole lot more, so really happy with what they're providing, and they're following the Green Building Code and the general rule of thumb, so we're good with it.
I appreciate that, and I love your background, the Greenmount S U P. Thanks for that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Commissioner Link, did you wish to ask any questions or stuff?
I did, yes. Thank you, Chair Buss, and I appreciate the presentation, Mr. Nielsen. I did have a question regarding the ADA path, and I appreciate that the applicant did their best to try to wind that pathway as far away from the protected zones. But I was curious about the material, I believe the project plans show Portland cement concrete. But I was curious whether the applicant, or if there are other materials that could be explored within those protected zones that would be less impactful. And the Portland cement requires a decent amount of subgrade improvements, which could be impactful to those protected zones, so I was curious if there was other materials that could be explored.
So there, potentially, there could be other materials explored. It would have to conform with the building code requirements. And particularly when you're, when we're talking about accessibility requirements, and it would provide walkways or accessible paths to, to buildings. The materials are, they tend to narrow down a lot more. Again, it is something that they can, alternative materials that can be explored during the building permit processing. Because city staff, we do, on the building side, we do have, I think we have its plan checkers who are CAS certified. So they would be able to, to identify whether a material is appropriate or inappropriate for those walkways.
Thank you, and then just to pile on, the other question I had was with regard to the truck trips. Given the amount of export and number of trips within the grading permit, would the applicant be required to submit any documentation of existing conditions, especially given T.O. Boulevard was recently overlaid, so we'd want to protect those improvements?
I will defer to Brad Bussell or Kathy Gnome for that response.
I'll respond to that. What, what we look at is for the applicant to tell us where they're taking their export to before we make conditions on what they can and cannot do. Well, we said, for, we know they might be dropping it off at Westlake High School, so we don't want to, in advance, tell them what they can't do, because we don't know what they want to do. So once they tell us, which they usually don't know until almost they're ready to export, where their dirt's going to go, we wait until they tell us where it's going to go, and then, exactly just, Mr. Link, we would have them avoid Thousand Oaks Boulevard if it's possible, depending on the time of day, but it really depends on where they're headed.
Okay, appreciated. Would they, regardless of the haul route, would they be required of documenting existing conditions so that those improvements could be maintained? So whatever route they choose, would they have to document the existing pavement conditions or what have you?
We historically don't have them do that.
That was it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just had a, I, I think it's one question, it might be multiple parts for staff. Hopping in the Wayback Machine to nineteen eighty eight, the decision number one thirty two dash eighty eight. You said that was a ten building plan that was put into place. And it wasn't clear if the ten buildings have been built, and the one that's on the non-subdivided lot currently was one of those ten buildings, and that's why the plan's completed and built out, and that's why they need to subdivide? Or have I got that wrong?
No, you're, you're effectively right, so there was, it was a ten building plan for it, and along the way, I think it was in nineteen ninety or nineteen ninety one, there was a minor change to the project that, in order to allow, it was a self-storage unit, which was in place of one of the buildings, and so that was actually built in place of one of the proposed office buildings. But the current, the existing building on the project site, that was part of the original plan for, in the nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty eight approval. It actually, in fact, if, going back to the, to the original, original site plan that was proposed, there was another building, I think at this location, that was proposed, but then the applicant at that time, they ended up removing that building from consideration as well, so they removed it from the plan. And so then we were built primarily with what is constructed out there, with the exception of that, that self-storage, which was a newer, newer change to that, to the original approved nineteen eighty eight planning commission approval.
All right, let me just guess one more time, so I'll make sure I get this straight. Was there ever a building intended to be at the site where we're deciding whether or not there's going to be a building today?
Yes, yes, so it was originally there, but then they removed it from consideration.
Copy that, okay, that, that, that's what I was just trying to make sure I got the, the question off. And then, I think that's, yeah, that's it for me for right now, so. Any other commissioners have any questions that they thought of after asking questions?
Yes, I have one quick follow up.
You got it, go ahead, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, regarding the encroachments along the pedestrian walkway, the applicant's tree report recommends a forty percent encroachment for tree twenty seven zero eight. This is essentially the biggest tree along that path, I think. And my question is, what a forty percent encroachment entails? Is it a forty percent reduction in volume of the tree, or cutting off forty percent of the branches, or what are we talking about here?
So effectively, what they would be doing is into the forty percent of the area, there's going to be that walkway, so I can actually, let me bring up the actual project plan. So just so I can speak on that, it's, it's a little bit easier that way. Let me do it this way. Thank you for your patience, Commissioners, I do appreciate it.
We're still going to take your word for it, that this is easier.
Okay, so here we have, this is just the conceptual landscape plan, so this is the forty percent intrusion for that. And so when we're talking about it, it's really just in terms of volume of the area, so about forty percent of that area is going to have, it's a new walkway. But the walkway is only going to be, it's about approximately four, four feet wide. And in this area, there's actually, they're going to try, the applicant is proposing to bridge over a portion of that, of the root system as well. So it's really trying to, to limit the amount of encroachments into that, into the tree that you have. And so that's the walkway, so that's the primary one, and then there's also the proposed building up in the north, northern portion of that tree. And it's, the applicant, they were trying to do, it's a saw two air, portion of that, of the structure in order to limit any amount of coverage that they have in that area. And effectively, what happens is that the, the tree itself, the, the branches, they're still going to be over this portion of the structure. So they're not going to be cutting it back, they're going to be doing probably normal pruning of that. But it's not going to be a wholesale cutting away at the, of those structures. But in terms of all of this, a little bit more of an eloquent explanation, I will go ahead and defer to, to the applicant's arborist, who could shed a little bit more light on that in technical terms.
Okay, but, but what you're saying, if I understand correctly, is that the forty percent references a reduction in area?
In, in a term, yes, but it's, I, I will go ahead and just defer to the, to John Ollinger to, to go through that explanation.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, I think we have no further questions from Commissioners, so thank you. And now we're going to ask for the applicant's representative to speak for fifteen minutes. I believe the representatives are going to be Tom Cohen and Francisco Bear. I have that correct, and if, if gentlemen are, you're here, please proceed, you have fifteen minutes. And you may be muted, so make sure you unmute yourselves.
Done that, have I?
Tom, I hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Planet Commissioners, Chair Buss, welcome to new Commissioner Link, we look forward to working with you. My name is Tom Cohen, and I'm here representing Haynes Properties. Bruce and Brian Haynes are with us this evening. They own the property, they own the building up above, that's currently occupied by their business and four others. We're seeking, as you heard, to subdivide this property into two parcels and construct the new beautiful contemporary office building. And it's always a great pleasure to have the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight, to share our, our excitement. We heard a lot of questions, and if Francisco and I don't answer them, we will certainly bring in the consultant who can best answer, and I heard a lot of questions about the trees. And so, Mr. Ollinger, get yourself ready, there's a number of things to, to be prepared to answer. I'd also like to thank city staff for your efforts in guiding us through the entitlement process and providing excellent advice and counsel on the design and the layout of the project on this sensitive piece of land. And staff put together a comprehensive and detailed report that we are one hundred percent in agreement with. Staff also produced a hundred and forty seven project conditions, all of which our, our client, the applicant, has agreed to. Third, I want to introduce our great team. Our project architect, Francisco Bear, civil engineer, Don Wade, arborist, John Ollinger, and landscape architect, Bob, Bob Medier, all have been key visionaries and integral to the quality of life and development throughout the Canal Valley for many years. Their fingerprints. Their fingerprints and handprints have been are are can be witnessed all throughout Thousand Oaks. Last, the development around the site occurred back back in the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties. Prior decision makers were tasked with how to allow development while also respecting the natural environment. And there are a lot of beautiful oak trees in this area and the slopes were maintained with some encroachment into twenty-five percent slope. To allow development while preserve preserving the beauty of the area. And Francisco and the team have done a stellar job to maintain the theme of preservation, both in the sighting of the building and and other improvements. But also with the architectural design that is both contemporary and consistent with the idea of blending in with the natural surroundings of the property. I will attempt to touch on a couple of things that I heard, but I think. We'll let Francisco speak next. And as I mentioned, to respect your time, the other consultants are available to respond to questions. We know John's gonna have the floor here for a while. So unless there's questions of me, I'm gonna turn it over to Francisco. But I may return back. So I wanna look at my notes, the questions that you guys all directed to staff and. Will most likely fall our way. So Francisco, why don't you take the floor and Chair Bus, thank you for the time.
Good evening. My name's Francisco Bear. I am president of Bear Bowers Architects, we've architectural firm. We've been in Thousand Oaks for almost forty years, close to forty years now. And we've done dozens and dozens of projects in in the city. Can I see my presentation, please? I think community development.
You were able to share your screen.
So this this project, we're really very proud of this project in in that. When we started the design, we had to find a place where we would provide the least amount of impact to. Do you see the project, by the way?
No, we cannot see your screen as shared.
Okay, Francisco, I can I can share my screen because I I do have a copy of your presentation.
Could you do that, please? Thank you.
Thank you. So is your planner Nielsen?
Is it up? No, I can't see it.
No, we cannot see it. There we go.
Okay, so you can go to the next slide. So what I was pointing out is that we're really proud of this project because we were very careful in designing it and locating the project. So as it's been mentioned, you know, there are twenty-eight oak trees on this property. And so in looking at them, we wanted to find the location that would have the least impact or no impact to those trees. As you can tell, that yellow area essentially tells you where we were determined, the the red lines are setbacks, the oak trees are there. And the the one unhealthy oak tree is located right in that one area where we're actually trying to place the building. Can you go to the next slide, please? The the design of the building is is pretty unique in that it literally fits into the hillside. And we did that to really accomplish something is to develop a building that uses sustainable principles. And accommodates passive and active energy conservation strategy. So this building is 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 designed to be an energy efficient building. The the the, there was a comment about the building being twenty thousand square feet. Well, actually, the parking's is surface parking. The building sits above it. The yellow area is the office building. And what we did is we wanted to minimize the the footprint of the development. And by putting the office on top of the parking, we were able to do that. We wanted to fit the building into the terrain. Because most of the parking is covered, we eliminate a lot of that heat sink effect that happens when you have parking lots exposed directly to the sun. We designed big overhangs so that we could block the heat gain into the building. We designed a roof that is a very shallow slope roof that allows us to capture solar energy, even though we're not pointed directly south. We're still gonna capture most of the day sunlight. We also designed a a clear story that will come into the hallway of the project. And and we have north-facing glass that would also allow daylighting to come into the project. And we wanted to make sure that was a lot of usable outdoor space. Next slide. So this is exhibited similar to the city, but I think what I wanted to also make clear, the yellow area is actually the footprint of the building, the office building. That is up above. The the gray is the footprint of the parking. The the area directly behind the building is actually a patio. The two oak trees that are impacted, you can see right there. That are, you know, only the the large oak tree and the very small oak tree towards the front. And then the rest of the trees that are on the property are completely left outside of that. By the way, with regards to the walkways, one of the things we did with the walkway is we we graded the elevation of the walkway. So that we're basically minimizing the amount that we have to carve in and actually building it up where we can. Because the the distance is so short that we're adding soil rather than digging a hole and trying to eliminate retaining walls there. So that was the whole strategy. When we go under the trees, we don't wanna create retaining walls. Next slide. So conceptually, we thought we have such a wonderful site with lots of oak trees. And working with the landscape architect, Bob Bombadear, he came back and said, why don't we enhance that? By surrounding the building in oak trees so that it really fits in like into an oak woodland. And so what you see here, all these trees inside that that pinkish tone. Are all the new oak trees or approximate locations for the new oak trees. And then there's one additional one that we're looking at out towards the front here. Next slide. So this is Bob's landscape plan that shows the trees. And of course, in addition to oak trees, we have other trees surrounding the property. In the end, this building would be completely surrounded by landscape. I think it'll be a really, the patio back here, it's a pretty large patio area. We actually have a terrace on the south side, this is the warmer side. That has fantastic views out towards the mountains. And then this will be a much cooler area. Because it'll have the oak trees and of course, the the upper slope. We're also very careful not to put the building up at the very top. It's actually below the the top of the knoll that is actually back here, because we didn't wanna cut off the knoll. We don't wanna reduce that. Next slide. So it's it's already been pointed out that right now from the entry point, you probably won't be able to see the building. And then this green area shows where in the future, as the oak trees get bigger, eventually it'll just look like an oak woodland as you're driving by. Via Merida. Next, next slide. And of course, this is in the, these are actually existing oaks that are here. These are the new oaks over on the left-hand side that are smaller. And eventually, when these take over. They'll begin to create that kind of oak woodland effect. Next slide. This is from Via Merida. So this isn't more in the future. As the trees get bigger, this is kind of the imagery that we're looking at. As is that the the building will just be sitting behind all the oak trees. This aerial view kind of gives you a much better picture of how the building fits around the existing oak trees and how the pathways work. The the building, because the offices are on the upper floor, we actually have an elevator that connects three levels here. Somebody with our bike comes in and actually the bike storage that's in here. By the way, the bike storage, we were even thinking of having two levels, which could hold about ten bikes. And it's secure. You know, that's important so people don't have to drag their bikes around. And also, we're looking at it, once we do the grading of trying to elevate parts of the walkway, to remove it from impacting underneath the trees. And eliminate, you know, again, grading under the tree. Next slide. So this is the the view that you would get as you go up the main driveway. And of course, the primary image is the main lobby. It's a two-story lobby with a stair that goes up. But you can actually take this walkway around the front and right behind here, you could enter the lobby of the elevator on the lower floor. Next slide. So. So that this is the project and and we're really proud of this project. We think it's a, it's a a well-thought-out, sensitive. Building and a sex sensitive site plan. And so we hope that you feel the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will, Mr. Cohen, do you have anything further to add? You have about three minutes left.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I think what I'll do is turn it over to Mr. Obliger, but I do wanna touch on two things that I heard from Commissioner McMahon. One was, is this being built for one tenant or multiple tenants? I think Mr. Haynes. It just doesn't know yet. I mean, he may move his company into this building. He's just. Very early in the assessment of the marketplace, which leads to the other question posed is, what is the? The vacancy factor in this office park? I I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Haynes may know better. With the COVID factor, it's a little difficult to assess that right now, because some people just aren't coming in. But I think we'll start seeing a trickle-back effect. And then why are we subdividing? That was a question from Commissioner Newman. And I think the answer to that is. Mr. Hayes wants the ability to. Lend against this property and having split it, he's he he can finance it easier. And then if he ever wanted to sell the property, it's it's easy to to accomplish that with a subdivided property. That that isn't his intent. That's not what he typically does. He he builds and holds, but. Got a plan for the future. With that, John, could you please respond to the questions that? We heard from the various Commissioners?
Just wanted to give you the opportunity to know, you can go ahead and use your opportunity to present and we we can ask the questions again during the Q and A session.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate that, Chair. I'm done.
Okay, so I'm John Oblinger. I'm with L Newman Design Group, the certified arborist for L Newman Design Group. And I can respond to questions as I recall them, or I can have them directed to me again. I guess I'd prefer hearing the questions.
You got it. I think, yeah, I think you were were done. It looks like they've reset the timer. So what I can do is just go ahead and and turn it over to Commissioners now and see who's got questions for you. If that works for you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Commissioners, who would like to ask questions? Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the applicant's team for your presentation. Regarding the trees, let's start there. Mr. Oblinger, do I understand correctly that the forty percent reduction. On tree two seven zero eight, we're talking about is a reference to its area? Yes, it's. It's a way of measuring the encroachment. It may not be the best way, but the, so the calculation is done by the area of the protected zone. So five feet outside the drip line. And then the area that's encroached. The percentage of the area encroached. So that basically for the the most encroached tree is number twenty-seven oh eight. And that's if you total the encroachment by the building and by the the walkway. You get forty percent. Okay, very good. It doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't take into account the depth of the encroachment. So. You know, a a wall constructed within the protected zone going down ten feet is going to is a greater encroachment than a pavement. In the same amount of surface area. Yeah, yeah. And that's that's essentially what I was asking was whether it was a two D or a three D measurement. And it sounds like it's a two D for planning purposes. Okay. Regarding twenty-seven oh seven, the tree in the application that the application seeks to remove. What's the approximate height of that tree? Yeah, that is in the report. It's thirty-five feet. Each tree. Sorry, I didn't see that. Thirty-five feet. And and then what's your estimate? Two-part question here. One, what's your estimate for any of the replacement trees to grow to that height of thirty-five feet? So typically, under good conditions, this tree didn't grow under good conditions. Pretty harsh conditions, but. A replacement tree for that tree, you know, is typically say eight to ten feet. It'll reach thirty-five feet and maybe fifteen, twenty years, even less. Okay. As far in terms of the the mass of the tree, that takes, you know, that could be forty or fifty years. Okay. And then I have the same question regarding the the, one of the slides Mr. Bear showed of the side of the building. With there are many more replacement trees. This is really a thirteen to one replacement we're talking about. And there was that that bunch of trees on the side of the building. And the question here is the same is is about how long do we think? In the future, it would be until the trees would be the height that's shown in that slide. Yeah, I mean, basically, it's the same answer because the the mitigation trees. You know, are. Ten to ten to fifteen feet tall. And so we're, it's it's, I'm sorry, is that is that what you're asking? Because those are the mitigation trees and they're gonna reach, you know, they're gonna grow to thirty-five feet in the next fifteen, twenty years. Well, that is a question I'm asking. It's it's a lovely artist conception. The question I'm asking is when will it look like that? And it sounds like you're saying fifteen to twenty years out. Yeah, I'm saying it'll reach that, it'll reach a height. I mean, they grow up and then they grow out. So so they'll reach a height sooner than they'll reach the canopy spread. Okay, but 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 you you're representing that in something like fifteen to twenty years time. That would be a reasonable representation of what that hillside would look like? Yeah, I think so. Okay, sounds good. The the only other question I had is an architectural one. One of Mr. Bear's slides had a bunch of sun rays hitting that roof and it's it's a big west-facing roof. So I presume solar panels would go on that roof?
Yes, the the idea is for that building to have a solar panels.
Very good. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Any other Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Chair Bus. For Mr. Oblinger, I think I think it was Commissioner Newman that indicated he walked through and saw that there was damage to the tree, maybe a fire. Did you note any kind of damage to that to twenty-seven oh seven?
Yeah, I was saying about that because I noted other trees with fire damage. And I saw that that tree, twenty-seven oh seven. I I saw that recently. And it does look like fire damage. And I called it fire damage. I don't know if there's a specific, I can't recall a specific fire in that area, but I I noticed several trees. And my note was old fire damage. So it's it wasn't two years ago. Okay, I'm getting the word that it's in nineteen ninety-five, there was a fire in that area.
It was arson.
An arson fire. So it was a small-scale fire, I guess, on that hillside.
And and from the report that we got, it was listed as a a D in terms of its health. Do you have any idea how long that tree would be able to live in in its present condition?
It's it's gonna be a while. It's the the problem with that tree is not. Let me put it this way. If if that tree wasn't. It was in a different location, I wouldn't recommend that it be removed because it's hazardous. Okay, it happens to be in poor health. It it was probably damaged pretty badly by the fire. And so it's had some structural defects. And so it is weakened structurally. It's it's not healthy, but it it's going to survive for for many years.
And is it, I mean, is it affected also by the fact that it's kind of at the top of a a peak, so to speak, so the water drainage is not exactly helping?
Exactly. Yeah, so it's that that was the least healthy tree of of all the trees that I I found on the site. Because of that reason, yeah.
And and back to my my initial question a long time ago, in terms of the pathway, I I noticed again, and Mr. Commissioner Link had a question with regard to the materials used for the ADA walkway. I i in terms of the tree roots and growth, is there any concern you have with regard to the health of the trees by virtue of whatever pathway they're going to put?
Yeah, I get the pathway isn't, it is an it is an impact to the tree, it will be. But it's it'll be surface roots. And so there will be roots below below that pathway. That will allow it to recover any root loss that. that will allow it to recover any root loss that, you know, it occurs with that great. But as Francisco said, the, the impact on the roots is minimized by the, the way that it's being constructed rather than being excavated. It's going to be built above, you know, on top of the, the surface, essentially.
Okay. I'll leave to Commissioner Link to ask his question about materials. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lanson. Any other commissioners have questions at the moment? For the applicant, Commissioner Link, please.
I, I did have one question, actually not in regard to the materials. It sounds like that could be handled by city staff, but it had been mentioned a little bit earlier about the, the use and whether or not office space is necessary, I suppose. Anecdotally, I know that the Baxter Building is essentially empty at this point and whether this building may be a victim of the times. I, I know we all are looking forward to getting back to work. But given the, sort of the push or the propensity for work from home, are you seeing a need for additional office space? And is, is there been a, a market study done that would support an additional 10,000 square feet in the city?
I'll take that question. The Baxter Building is a very unique building. I don't know if you've been in it, but it was built with a single occupant in mind. It was built for Prudential back in the late seventies. And then it was occupied by GTE, Verizon, et cetera. And it's got huge common area space within it. It's, it's not a building ideally suited to multi-tenant use and there isn't a single tenant in that building. Baxter's name is associated with it because the street into it is called Baxter Way. But Baxter doesn't occupy it. I, I don't believe they occupy any space in there anymore. So with respect to the office market, I don't have that background or expertise. Mr. Hayes is in the business and he believes that there will be utilization of this particular property and it's going to be, it's unique. The design is, is unlike anything else in the area. It's modern. And it, it, it is a space that he may ultimately move his company into if he so chooses.
Commissioner Link, I may also be able to shed some light on, on this as well. So even though there was no an economic report required for this particular project, excuse me, general, I, I am able to speak on some general planning trends that we have been able to, to view going through like the office market, commercial market, everything else. In terms of office markets, so like the larger, older, like headquarter buildings that you saw developed in the late seventies, eighties, like the Baxter Building or the Kinko's Buildings in Ventura, those tend to have a, our time attracting multiple tenants just because they do have, there is just so much space to occupy. But one of the other trends that, that we've seen is move away from those larger buildings into some of these smaller office buildings that have flexible work floors and everything else where you can do either a primary, a, a single primary tenant, you could have multiple tenants, you could have shared workspace, different areas of that nature. So that's, even though we are going through the pandemic and the office market is changing and it may bounce back a little bit more, but it's going to be permanently, potentially could be permanently changing. It's these smaller office spaces, they tend, according to the planning research, there's tend to be a higher demand for those versus these, the, the larger single buildings that you see across the street.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. It's, it's Tom Cohen. I, I do want to add one other piece to this. The, the the city is in a, in a growth mode in the life sciences and biotech field. And while the focus has been in the Rancho Canal Industrial Park area, we're going to see an expansion beyond those boundaries of the Rancho Canal Industrial Park undoubtedly. And the size of this building uniquely fits the kind of the model for the incubators that are spawned through the investment that's come in through Westlake Bio Ventures that you're that is, is happening as we speak. It's, it's a pretty exciting time and I think that you'll see these uses spread out into, you know, the Westlake portions of Thousand Oaks off of Towns Gate. You'll see it here. Where we're looking, you know, there's an Anthem Building next door that's empty. You know, there's, there, there's going to be some growth, growth opportunities for, for that sector. And this, this community is well suited to take it on. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. Commissioner McMahon, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right. Mr. McMahon is nodding negative. So I just had one question for the arborist, Mr. Oblinger. The tree that we're, that we've talked about a couple of times now, 2708 with the 40% coverage. My only question is, is when it is trimmed back for the actual construction done, do you see there being potential issues in the future for it encroaching over the patio, patio area that I believe is the building extension on the one side? I think we've kind of talked the pathway to death. I just want to make sure the other side's going to be safe.
Yeah, that is, that is a challenge. The idea, the idea will be to prune that tree, you know, prior to grading in such a way that it, you know, that it, you know, so that it doesn't appear, well, that it appears natural. In other words, there is a good pruning technique to to remove some large branches and have it grow back in, in a more or less natural way with good structure. So it will, I mean, it's going to continue to grow towards the building. And so it's a main maintenance issue, but it can be, I mean, it's going to have to be sort of rebalanced and, and redirected. So it, it can be done if it's done properly, which if you have the right tree trimmers, they can do it.
All right. All right. Copy that. I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting off a decision. We're going to have to be making 20, you know, somebody's going to have to be making 20, 25 years down the line when it, when it does become a greater issue. So if that's not the case, then I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, it's, we're not going to, you know, when I direct the pruning out there, we won't be pruning the tree to, you know, in the, the shape of the footprint. You know, like the utility companies do around power lines.
Copy that.
It'll be, it'll be done in a more sensitive way.
Perfect. Good to hear. Thank you very much. I have no further questions. And I believe none of my commissioners have any further questions. So we can go on to public comments. To the best of my knowledge, and Secretary, please correct me if I am wrong, but we do not have any public speakers this evening?
That's correct.
All right. Then we will not have to worry about giving them, allotting them time or anything. Along to, we can go back to staff for any follow-up comments. Planner Nielsen, if you have any, anything to add based upon what we've discussed?
I don't have anything, a, any other corrections. I do just want to direct the commission to the oak tree conditions of approval. It's number 58 through number 78. So there's 20 conditions that go over it. So it's not only the mitigation trees, but also the transplant of the trees and all the pruning, all the pruning of the trees. There's, in addition to those conditions, there's also the city, the oak tree ordinance. So there's going to be, whenever there's effectively be a pre-construction meeting for the city consultant to go out to the site to meet with the applicant to review the proposed plans and everything else. And then once the, any type of pruning or or it commences, the city consultant, they will have to go out and they would be observing. So that's all embedded within the condition, not the city conditions as well as the city's oak tree ordinance. So there's, there's a lot of protections and governance over, over the oak trees. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add. I will open it up to Senior Planner Contreras, Manager Kearns, or Deputy Director Finley as well.
Do any of the people that were just mentioned have anything to add?
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Chair Bus.
Nothing to add. Thanks a lot, Don Nielsen, for the presentation and the explanations.
All right, then. Commissioners, any further questions for staff? All right. I think we're good there. I will open it up to the applicant. Do you have anything further that you'd like to add before I close?
Thank you, Chair. This is Tom Cohen. I don't, Francisco or anybody else on the team have anything that they would like to close with? Okay, hearing none. I just, I just want to thank you all for your time and we are hopeful that you'll approve our applications this evening. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen and, and every other applicant. I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will open up the floor for a motion or discussion from any of my fellow commissioners. Yeah. Commissioner Lanson?
Thanks, Chairman Bus. I think in looking at this for me, there's some things that obviously are concerning. I think number one, I think the commissioners pointed at it in terms of, is this necessary? Is this going to be useful? Is this going to be needed? I don't think that's part of our review process, but it is an important question that obviously is, is getting to us in terms of what we're going through right now. But putting that aside, the, the, the things that I have, you know, concerns about are, are obviously the trees. By the way, the one tree that, that we've talked about is going to be removed. I also note from looking at the surroundings that not a lot of vegetation is doing well around it either, by the way. So I don't know exactly how much, you know, how, how, how great that tree is doing. It's not exactly visible from lots of areas. So I balance that with what I think are some great parts of this project. The, the, you know, again, look, we're always looking for connectivity. The way this building looks in, in terms of the slope and how it integrates with the trees and the materials they're using, I think just looks fantastic. And I, I wish we could like automatically change the look of all the other buildings in that whole area to, to mimic this. I think it would look fantastic. So that to me looks like a great project. It looks like a lot of time, effort and energy went into trying to make sure all these things work. Looking at the staff report, all those things kind of check off. Mr. Cohen said the applicant is already agreeable to all the different conditions. He went through all that process. It looks like the applicant, the staff to me did a fantastic job of kind of doing all of this process and making sure it's as good as it's going to be to come to us. Obviously, there's still a few problems, but again, to me, I think it's, it's a, a good balance in favor of the applicant. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve special use permit 2020-70377, land division 2020-70378, and oak tree permit 2020-70379, including the encroachment into slopes greater than 25% gradient based on the finding and subject to the conditions and approval contained in the attached resolution.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lanson. Do any of my other fellow commissioners, Commissioner McMahon, please?
Yeah, excuse me. I think that developing in Thousand Oaks, you're always going to have an issue with oak trees. That's why we love this area. And I think that the architect has designed this to minimal, minimize the problems removing one unhealthy oak and working around all the others was, I think was done really well. I want to compliment you on the way you designed it for the future with integrating it into the hill, using the solar and all the energy complements that you, you used. I, I love that you're going to do an oak woodland. I think that's fantastic. And you have, you've kind of brought designing for Thousand Oaks into the next era. And I, I really appreciate what you've done and I, I will support this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Newman?
Sorry, un, unneat myself there. Sorry. I'll echo the comments of Commissioners Lanson and McMahon. You know, I, I have the same concerns. Commissioner Lanson mentioned about no one, no one likes to see a tree removed ever. But the fact is that there are 13 other trees going in here and they will take a while, but we should be clear on that going in. This project isn't going to look like the artist conceptions on day one, but eventually it will. And no one likes to see 46% of any lot be graded. But any property owner does have a right to a reasonable and conformant use of their property. And that's what's being done here. And I'll echo Commissioner McMahon's comments. I want to compliment Mr. Bear on his very sensitive design. I, I too wish that every project we reviewed was as sensitive and as complimentary to the area that it's going on as this one is. So I will support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Commissioner Link, do you have any comments?
I, I think everybody has said, essentially I would be echoing what everybody else had said. So I mean, obviously, much as I would, I, well, I would like to see this project succeed and the, the choice of what projects come before us is not our, within our purview. So, you know, I appreciate that we are, we are not in the business of determining which land uses occur in the city. I, I think I, I would have hoped to have heard that, yes, we are in need of office space and yes, we've done our, our, our due diligence, but either way, I will support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Link. I have old data from a state of the city and county two years back before the pandemic started. There was a shortage of office space in this area, both citywide and countywide. Obviously, the pandemic has altered that landscape significantly. So my information is old. But I would, I, I would like to share that as of two years ago, we were very low on office space. And further to go into this project itself, I'm not a big fan of visible parking lots. And so the fact that this building basically hides the parking was one of the things that I liked most about it. So thank you very much to the architect for, for incorporating that idea into it. Even more enthusiastic I am about the idea of bicycle parking. As someone who probably could use a, a few moments on a bicycle once in a while, that's a great idea. So I, I am also very enthusiastic about this project. I actually went up to visit that oak tree 2707 one more time today and took my daughter with me. And she reminded me that we're never a fan of chopping a tree down, especially in the city, and they are very important to us. But I, I must concur with my fellow commissioners that the fact that over a dozen other trees will be planted on this site is a is a, is a great counterpoint to losing a tree. So I will go ahead and close out this discussion and Secretary, please prepare us for a vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Lanson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Hi.
Chair Bus?
Hi.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. Now the official part. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with Community Development Department within 10 days.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners. We appreciate your time and appreciate your support. Have a good night.
Thank you very much to the applicants, Mr. and Mr. Haynes, as well as all the staff that accompanied them. Good luck with your project, gentlemen. All right. And then moving on, we're going to go to department reports. I believe there are none. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Perfect. And we will move along to commission comments and AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? Commissioner Lanson?
I just wanted to say, as we hopefully come out of this pandemic, if you have a problem out there with regard to what to do about the vaccine, don't listen to TVs, don't listen to politics, listen to your doctor. Call out your doctor and go through the issues with your doctor directly and make sure you have that conversation. That's the person you should be listening to. That's the best place to get advice.
Any other commissioners? All right. Then I will echo Mr. Lanson's comments by saying that I emailed my doctor today to find out if I'm eligible at this point. So I encourage everybody out there to talk to their doctors. Moving on, staff update. Ms. Finley, are there any follow-up items, announcements or upcoming issues?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bus. I do have a couple of announcements and I'll go over the upcoming Planning Commission meetings. First tomorrow, I wanted to let you know that the City Council will be First, tomorrow, I wanted to let you know that the City Council will be. Reviewing the and the general plan consultants will be conducting a study session on the environmental justice and equity element of the general plan. Which will be of interest as it relates to the general plan. Update efforts. Also, if anyone, anyone hasn't filled it out yet, not the planning commissioners, but anybody in the public. The General Plan Update Survey regarding the land use alternative closes tonight at eleven fifty nine P M. So. If you want to take the survey, the public could go to the website, which is T Oaks, T O A K S twenty forty five dot org. To fill out the survey or put comments on the maps. However, if you do miss the survey, there will be additional opportunities to provide feedback on the general plan update efforts over the next year. Then moving on to. The Planning Commission, upcoming Planning Commission meetings. The next meeting is scheduled for March twenty ninth, and staff will. First provide a summary of the general plan annual report as an informational item to share the city's progress in. Meeting the regional housing needs allocation that or the R H N A. And also progress in implementation of the general plan. This is an annual report that's required to be submitted to this date annually. Annually, of course. Anyway. Then, following that item, the General Plan Update Team and consultants will bring forward the survey results. And discuss the land use alternatives and receive feedback from the Planning Commission. Then, moving on to April twelfth, we have. I think we just got confirmed that we're will bring forward a special use permit for a sports training facility. And we're also working on a adding a second general plan related item to that agenda as well. And then finally, for April twenty sixth, this will be the second. Planning Commission hearing on the and will bring forward the preferred land use alternative for discussion and comments. And that concludes my updates for this evening. Thank you, Chair Bus, excuse me, and members of the commission.
Thank you so much, Ms. Finley. I think that brings us to the end. So before I adjourn, I just want to apologize to both Commissioner McMahon and Commissioner Lanson for addressing you by your first names during the meeting. I was a little bit nervous. I appreciate you guys for being patient with me. And with that, thank you all. The meeting is now adjourned to the next meeting on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one at six P M. Thank you.
Good night.
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 Good night.